Welcome. I call to order the town council regular session at 7:35. And the date is Monday, January 27, 2014. If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have the roll call, Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Donnelly.
Present.
Councilwoman Haley.
Present.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of January 8th and January 13th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have approval of the regular session December 18th and January 13th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Do we want anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move that we remove 13B from the consent agenda. And after that approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of new business item 13B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a Victor Ling license to Ocean State 5.3 Limited Liability Corporation doing business as Five Guys Burgers and Fries, 600 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, an application by Eugene Prentice, 100 Cummings Center, 311 J Beverly, Mass. And we have Eugene here.
Yes.
Welcome. If you could come to the microphone and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about Five Guys.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Gene Prentice, and this is my operating partner Jamal Barot here. We're the partners with the franchise that's also in Maine, Boston, and Rhode Island. We've been with Five Guys for five years now, and this will be our fourth location in the state of Rhode Island. We've been looking forward to this location for a long time. And we have a great relationship so far with the landlord, Si Soravo, and his son-in-law, Steve Manny. And we're very excited about this location.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the menu and maybe hours of operation?
We are open Monday through Sunday from 11 o'clock in the morning until 10 o'clock at night, seven days a week. We are a very simple menu. We have burgers, fries, and hot dogs. And we're all freshly cut. Nothing comes frozen, not a single freezer in the whole entire restaurant.
Wow. Wow.
Nice. Yeah. Do we have questions here from the town council members? Carol?
I know you have one in -- was it Warwick? And there's one in Newport, right?
Newport is the first one, actually, we had.
What, in Newport?
Newport, yes.
Oh, wow. And it's build your own, isn't it? Is that like you can have all these different things on the?
Sure. And you can build a burger the way you want it, and it's 250,000 ways to make a burger, so.
I know my kids love it.
There you go. See, it's the best burger. It's all fresh. Like Gene mentioned, there is no freezers. We don't believe in a frozen product. So everything is hand-cut, fresh, every day. So we hand form our patties every day at the restaurant, so it's a great product.
Meg?
I know you're going to be sharing the location where Moe's is going to be, if I'm not mistaken. So in terms of your hours of operation, is there going to be conflict in terms of hours if one of you closes or opens at different hours?
I think we have the same hours of operation, so there shouldn't be any issues.
Okay. You're not connected, are you?
No, no, we're not. It's different businesses.
Yeah. There's a wall in the middle.
Yeah, there is a wall in the middle, right.
Okay. You're thinking when it was Friendly's, it was one big.
Yeah.
Well, it was one space before, but then the landlord subdivided, and we took the Incap, and Moe's got the other side, so we're neighbors, so.
When do you foresee opening?
We are in the final process right now of the construction, so as soon as we get the blessing, and the CO will be happy to. So we're looking target date, January 10th. That's the target date. February 10th, sorry.
I missed the time.
One month behind.
We're only two guys, not five, right?
It's only two. We need the other three.
Jim?
How many -- what is the seating capacity?
We have 65 seats total inside, and we also have a patio with three outdoor tables.
Any other questions here at the table? Jim?
Can you buy at least local produce, or are you going to buy through, you know, Steve's, the Belmont, obviously, but?
We're a franchise group, so we have to go buy what the franchisor sets for us to buy, the vendors to buy from. So that's something in the agreement, that we have to go buy what the franchisor sets up for us to buy from.
So we go through a company called US Foods, which services pretty much all the Five Guys in the continental United States, and they have a division right in Norwich, Connecticut, and?
Aren't they in the middle of a huge merger or buyout right now, US Foods?
Yes. Cisco recently purchased US Foods.
So they'll have basically a monopoly on the business. Wow. Nothing local, so hmm, okay, all right.
All right, any other questions? All right, can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You will make my children very happy.
February 10th, not January 10th.
February 10th. You'll be there.
Medium rare.
Meg, it's going to make you happy if you don't have to cook.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good night.
Absolutely, Ella.
That would be good.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing relative to the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 to fiscal year 2019-2020 capital improvement program, as shown in Exhibit 1 attached here, too. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
As the council is aware, manager's office has prepared a six-year capital improvement program. The council had budget hearings on each of the project elements on January 9th, January 8th, 9th, and 15th. The Exhibit 1 on the agenda this evening provides a summary of all projects that are under consideration in the first year of the capital improvement program, that being the capital budget for the 2014-15 fiscal year. Section A talks about the 14 projects that are resident to the general fund for a total of $1,286,000. The total program over the six years would amount to about $8.2 million in general fund expenses over that six-year period. The -- I would ask if there's questions from council or from the audience, that they bring those forward as we walk through it. I'd like to answer the questions and have necessary dialogue as we go through the presentation. The water fund is listed with six projects. There's $180,000 forecast for the 2014-15 year. Over the six years, we would expend $645 in accordance with the schedules that are resident to the capital improvement program. No property taxes are used with the water fund or the wastewater fund in the capital improvement program. Those costs are recovered through rate base for both the wastewater enterprise fund or the water enterprise fund. Jim, you had a question?
Yeah, Victoria Lane. Do we have reserve or escrow money for that in case that turns out to be another quarter million dollar paint job of some kind, or you don't think that's on the horizon?
No, I think that it's really, I think the only thing we're going to look at is probably more frequent power washing being necessary. The paint is proper. The difficulty is that the paint, without any type of lead base to it, appears to allow for the growth of the algae on the sidewalls. Unfortunately, particularly the Victoria Lane water tank is considerably higher than the Mortucket tank, and there are very few companies that have the ability to be able to do the cleaning. Last company that we used was, I think, out of New Jersey. But this is a necessary project that -- there's nothing wrong with the interior of the tank. It's just the exterior, based on the temperature changes that occur, that we're seeing that type of a growth.
Thank you.
The wastewater fund, we have five projects that are listed there, or elements of projects, for $403,500. Over the six years, the six-year schedule calls for wastewater improvements of approximately $2,100,000. It's noted that we present capital improvements for the wastewater fund on behalf of regional partners. So these costs that are listed here are for total capital costs. Like cost sharing will come from the university, as well as from the town of Narragansett. Item D shows the school fund for $300,000. This is a component of the school superintendent's budget document and was adopted by the school committee when they reviewed their capital needs back in, I believe, October. This component will be an element of the school committee's recommended budget for the 14-15 year. It may well change, just as any of these other funds may change, to be able to fit within the overall budgets, where there's any type of tax requirements associated with project funding. So while it shows $300,000, that could be revised prior to the school committee transferring their budget request for tax support to the town manager's office on February -- in February, I think it's on February 14th. The overall spending over the six-year term for school function would be about $1,770,000. So we're looking at an overall capital budget, first-year funding of the capital improvement program at $2,169,500. Over the six years of the capital improvement program that was reviewed by the council, if all those costs were incurred, we would be spending $12,672,000. The second element that's listed, long-term capital projects, is a listing by functional area of 15 different capital projects, for a total of $24,095,000. That is what we would spend over the six years if all 15 of those projects were completed. Of that $24,095,000, $11.55 million would be through bonding projects. The remainder of the dollars would come from other sources. When we talk about other sources, about $5.4 million of those other sources are from the capital budget items that were listed, Items A through D, for the six-year schedule. So what we're doing is we're going on a pay-as-you-go basis that would then have transfers into capital reserve funds to be able to fund those 15 projects that are listed under the six-year long terms. If there's no questions on long term, I'll move on. Fair share development fees, the recommendation for education fair share fees for the 14-15 year is a cost of $2,162 for single and duplex units. That fee is down from $3,244 in the current year. One of the reasons for that substantial or one-third reduction in costs from the current year to July 1st of 2014 is a recalculation of the formula used for the education fees, whereby looking at the cost of the Broad Rock School, dividing that cost based on two grades using it rather than three, which had been using it in prior years. Since the reset of the school system back in 2012-13 year, where they had two classes at Broad Rock and two classes at Curtis Corner, we felt it appropriate to make the adjustment on the education fair share fees. It also, I think, provides a promotion of residential construction and jobs within the community in the building industry with that type of a reduction. Fees are also down by an equal percentage for the multi-household units or the accessory apartments. Recreation facilities fair share fees are posted at $2867 for single households and for households with two bedrooms or less at $2,150. Those are the same fees that have been in place for the last two years, so this will be the third year where there's been no change in that fee schedule. There is full documentation on how both of those fees are established in the capital improvement program budget document. The last item for the calculation of in-lu fees, as we noted to the council in the work session, in-lu fees are not legally available for use by the planning board at this time. However, were the general assembly to pass legislation that would allow the institution of in-lu fees, it would provide the planning board with the opportunity to assess a fee of up to $94,000 for any affordable housing unit that they deemed impossible of being developed within a new subdivision, or not available for construction within the general community itself. This would be a last option available to the planning board where it made available again. As I mentioned in the budget work sessions, the case involving East Greenwich, courts have indicated that without specific delegation of the ability to institute that type of a fee, municipalities do not have the statutory right to. So until that statutory right is granted by the general assembly, we'll continue to post it in the capital improvement program, so that where that legislation passed, it would be an option available to the planning board in working with affordable housing development and private developers. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to address them at this time.
Any questions for Steve here at the table? I think that you answer a lot of our questions during all of the work sessions that we had. So seeing there's no questions, I'm going to open it up to the public. If anybody has any questions in reference to the capital improvement plan, if you could Seeing none, can we have motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. And before we make the motion to accept the capital improvement plan, I just, again, want to thank Steve and your staff, you know, as well as the town council and all the school department administration and the school committee for working together and putting together, you know, a wonderful capital improvement plan, all of your dedication and hard work. This town is very fortunate to have the staff that we have, and we're truly grateful to make this South Kingstown superb, a place that we call home.
One thing I would also like to mention, Ella, is that as we move forward, the council will also have to deliberate on what bond referendum questions they would pose to put forward to the general assembly to have included on the November ballot. By adopting the capital improvement program as presented tonight, a component or recommendation within that would be that a $4 million issue be considered for school building improvements, and a $1 million be considered for a community recreation center. If the council wishes, what we'll do is to place resolutions on a future agenda for the council to take those questions under consideration, so that the clerk can then present a request to our local legislators to introduce the necessary legislation for that purpose.
So do you want that as part of the motion to approve the capital improvement?
No, I want you to adopt the capital improvement program, but I will bring forward those other questions at a future meeting.
Great. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
To close the public hearing?
We closed. We already voted on that. Now we'll take the motion.
We didn't do a motion yet, okay. I move that we adopt the proposed fiscal year 2014 to 2015 to fiscal year 2019 to 2020 capital improvement program, as shown in Exhibit 1.
Second.
We have motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Next item on the agenda is Communication B. This is a communication dated January 22, 2014, from Andre Rakamaka, submitting her resignation from the Library Board of Trustees, as received, placed on file in the town council for the directs. And Dale, do you know how long she served on this board? It's been quite some time.
Well, I move that we thank her for her service, and we appoint Betty Carter tonight.
Okay, we'll get through Communication B. We have a motion from Carol. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. This is the time, if we have somebody in the audience that would like to come, state their name, and speak to the town council, please come forward.
Good evening. Having been at this microphone for a little while, I miss seeing you guys every other Monday. I was hoping that I could give some paperwork to the clerk to distribute. And I just want to give a copy to each member of the press, just so they have what I'm putting in the record. Okay, so, you know, first I'll say, you know, I try and start off with some kind of disclosure, you know, a lot of the time. So I am a member of the South Kingstown School Committee, elected November of 2012. I'm very pleased to serve, and in fact, I'm very honored to serve this community. I've got five children. They've all gone to the South Kingstown Public Schools. Just had a graduate this past year. She's off to college, doing very well. 3.6, I got to brag on her. What can I say? So I got two at the high school, and then two at Broad Rock. I tend to think, so I just want to kind of try and work off of the conversation from the town council, school committee joint work session of January 15th. And so I do have a school committee hat, but I do kind of feel that I'm maybe here more as a community member, interested in, you know, kind of some of the planning and zoning, you know, how that affects growth in town.
If I can just interject here, Jonathan, being a former member of the school committee, the school committee only functions as a group of seven.
Yes.
And, you know, you will be here speaking tonight as a community member, unless you have permission from the school committee to be here speaking as a school committee member.
Yes, okay. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. How I'm meaning to say that is, I do have my own individual school committee hat, and so I don't think I can take that off totally, because I'm part of these conversations. But it's a good clarification, but I think anybody that follows how this, you know, my interactions with the other school committee members knows that I don't speak for the school committee. Usually those six to one votes. Yeah, so anyways, okay.
Thanks.
All right, so, you know, I think, I kind of go back to the conversation four years ago, where there was talk of closing a school. And then the school committee at that time, you know, I really think they dropped the ball the following year, where they were supposed to have a larger conversation about how they wanted the schools configured. And so all this time was set aside to have a larger conversation. And for whatever reason, it was not set up in that way. The conversation was kept very narrow. You know, the meetings technically met the definition of an open meeting, but it was definitely not an open, full participation process, and the town was really hardly involved whatsoever. And so I think that's really is a missed opportunity, and, you know, maybe that's part of the reason I ended up getting elected, is because people didn't really like how that worked. So I want to say, you know, this is, so feeding off of the January 15th meeting, I brought forward the idea that, the idea came up that we have declining enrollment. That's a fact. And what I was trying to bring forward is, well, because I guess a couple of the other participants at the meeting voiced, well, you know, it's too bad that there's declining enrollment, and wouldn't it be a shame to see a school closed in the future? And how tumultuous those couple of years where there was discussion of a school closing happening, wouldn't it be unfortunate if we have to do that again in a couple of years? So I brought forward the idea that, you know, the town does have a role to play in how many children live in South Kingstown. So I, part of what I'm bringing forward, you know, very simply, you know, there's different pieces to it, and I'm not that verse on this, and I'm not coming forward to be critical of previous efforts, because, you know, if you kind of work with me here, you know, back, you go back 15 years, the growth in this town was going, you know, through the roof. And so planning at that time said, you know, next thing you know, we're going to be at 50,000 people, and we're going to, we just built, we have to build a school at Broad Rock, and if we keep going on this route, maybe we'll have to build another school. So there could be conversations about that, but I'm not coming here saying that that was not, that a lot of these efforts weren't the right things to do. It's really just to say, well, where are we today, and where do we want to go? So, you know, I have the fair share development fees, which actually have just been updated tonight as part of your capital improvement program. And so a very simple way for people to see that the town encourages development of smaller dwellings is there's a higher impact fee on a single-family unit than there is on a two-bedroom, multi-household unit. So very simply, so, you know, there was kind of brought forth that, you know, that's not accurate, Jonathan. You know, it's all market-based, and so it's just right there. That's a very simple thing to see. I pulled from the zoning and subdivision and land regulations, and there's encouragement, you get, developer gets more units, more bedrooms per acre if they go with a one- or two-bedroom unit versus a three-bedroom unit. And then I'll just read, you know, one sentence. I think this is reflective of what's in there. One, but just pulling out one sentence, and so there can be discussion around this, but the sentence that I'm highlighting, which I highlighted as part of the packet, says, "The establishment of multi-household dwellings is further intended to avoid the overburdening of municipal services and facilities." It's right there. It's right there in the planning. Let's have smaller units, so then there's less children. I mean, you know, there's, they use different words, you know? But there's less children, so then there's less need to raise taxes to educate the children. That's the biggest, everybody knows, that's the biggest part of the budget is our schools, it's 77, 78 percent. And then I just pulled from zoning. And then, I just pulled from zoning regulations, which I highlighted, that same concept that in the RM and R10 zoning districts, if you want to build a single-family house, you need 10,000 square feet. If you want to build a multi-household structure, which, you know, kind of picture as being, you know, a little condo development, you need 7,500 for the first, you need 15,000 for the first two, so 7,500 per unit for the first two. Then after that, you need 5,000 square feet for each unit thereafter. So, a developer can look at the regulations, and hopefully I've got my calculations right, but if they want to build 12 single-family units, they need 120,000 feet. If they want to build 12 units and they're willing to go with a multi-household structure, kind of similar to a condo-type style, they need 65,000 square feet. All right. So, I guess I just want to bring that forward. I don't know that we really can have our conversation, how much of a conversation we can have about this with open meetings, laws and requirements, but I do hope that this conversation will evolve, and really, it's just to say, I don't, because I don't know what the answer is. That's why I ask all these questions. People at school committee don't like questions. Superintendent doesn't like questions.
Right, we shouldn't really be, let's not be derogatory against the school committee if we can keep those comments separate.
Well, I'm sharing my experience.
All right, they're still derogatory, and I'd appreciate, keep those outside of the town chambers, thank you.
All right.
All right, so if we could...
All right, so, basically, I'd like to have a good relationship with you guys. Overall, I have had a good relationship with you guys. My relationship in high school cafeteria is not that good, so I'm just sharing that, that's a fact. But I do think that this conversation should have happened a few years ago. I do assign the responsibility for that conversation not happening to the school committee. That's basically a fact. But the fact that it didn't happen doesn't mean that it shouldn't happen, and I hope, I don't know whether, I'm trying to have a conversation here, I don't know whether frustration coming from the Town Council is...
Jonathan, if I can just ask you to put what you're looking for maybe in one or two sentences, because I see, you know, many things that you've thrown out there. You've, you know, focused on having this community gym over at Curtis Corner Middle School, you have focused on, you know, zoning regulations and looking at one-bedroom units versus three, you know, so you've kind of given us a smattering of many things. If you could just group it all together in one or two sentences so we can get our arms around this, and then we'll...
Okay, well, you have a lot of documentation there, that's why I want to put it into the public record. This isn't going to be decided tonight, so I'm trying to bring forward at the January 15th meeting, that it was stated by a number of people participating in the meeting that it was all market-based, and that there was no restrictions on how land is developed in terms of, that would result in more children in the schools or less children in the schools. So, I'm bringing forward a lot of different ideas to show it's not just one example, but there's quite a few examples. So, I just hope there'll be a further conversation in this regard, and I'm just trying to bring forward, I don't know what the answer is. If the town is happy to have declining enrollment of student population, continue, fine. If the town, and then we'll close the school, and we'll have the, you know, all the arg that we had, similar to a couple of years ago, that's fine. But if the town does not want to see student enrollment decline, it's not like it's just happening by happenstance. There's a number of pieces, part of it is related to how the schools are run, but part of it is also related to how the town passes its regulations, so that's all I'm trying to bring forward, not trying to settle this tonight, but it's a conversation that should have happened a few years ago, and we shouldn't not have the conversation just because we didn't.
Okay, so your main focus is future possibilities of closing a school and all of the, you know, filtration that feeds into lowering, you know, declining enrollment, so is that basically, did I get it in a nutshell?
I wouldn't want to say that my focus is whether or not a school closes. The conversation, I'm really just feeding off the conversation that I heard, that I participated in, when I heard other people saying, "We don't want to see enrollment decline." So, I'm just trying to bring forward that there is, there are methods to keep that from happening, if that's a sincere thought.
Okay. Carol?
Are you trying to say that the impact fees for educational facilities and recreation facilities are keeping people from moving to this town and going to our schools? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, that's not what I'm trying to say.
Well, that sounds like what you're trying to say, I mean, somehow you're trying to tie in...
Are you trying to treat me as a hostile witness?
I want to know what you're trying to say.
I think, well, I think what I said was...
You're saying there's a declining pupil population, we know that, it's happening in every city in town in this state, and probably around the country. So, I don't understand how you're trying to tie in the educational facilities fee and the recreational facilities fee, which by the way, is a one-time fee for new buildings only, because of the impact that the people have on the town. The more people you have come in, the more, you have to provide services for them.
Correct.
This is just a fact.
Correct.
And if you took a sentence out of the multi-household dwellings and you piecemealed it together to make it say what you want it to say, if you read the entire paragraph, it does not say what you're saying. It's talking about location, design, density of multi-household dwellings, and how to make them work together within the community in specific locations. I mean, you're not reading the whole paragraph, because otherwise, what you're saying doesn't even make sense if you read the whole, if you read everything you're saying here and then combine it with the educational fees and the recreational fees and then the declining pupil population, I'm completely confused at what you're trying to say.
Okay, there's...
And I think you tried to say it the other night, that somehow we are trying to not encourage families in this community, which is completely absurd, in my opinion.
Well, you have a right to your opinion, and what I will say is, the reason I brought this forward to be part of the record, because I'm trying to be respectful of the time, but this is a larger conversation, so I didn't feel like it was appropriate to read the whole paragraph as the example you're using.
You can't piecemeal.
Please don't cut me off.
No, I will, because you're taking, you're taking it out of context, that's what we call what you're doing. And you're making it say what you want to make it say, not what the paragraph says.
And I don't want to have to...
My opinion is, you don't like what is being said, so you're trying to twist it a bit.
No, you're trying to twist it, I completely disagree with you.
Well, we can disagree.
And I don't want to really get back and forth with too much of a dialogue, because we'll have to add it to the agenda. But I do want Meg to make a brief comment.
I appreciate the fact that you came in and your candor and you spoke up. I do want to, however, make a point of clarification, because this was handed to us, to the clerk, and also to the media. When you look at the fair share development fees, Steve Alfred spoke in the face sheet that you gave us, single and duplex units, you have a figure of 3244, which you did get from the town, that actually has been reduced to $2,162. So, they have reduced those fees. The multi-household units in two bedrooms went from 1,00622 down to 1,081, and the accessory apartments in multi-household units with one bedroom went from 811 to 541. So, you might want to...
Sure, I will definitely, I'm happy to have that incorporated in. That was information that was only just voted on tonight. So, prior to that, I went to Town Hall, I went to the Building Inspector's office on whatever day it was, Wednesday, and that was current on Wednesday, and now here it is Monday, now there's new information.
Right.
But, but just for, you know, my own point of clarification, even with the new rates, there's still encouragement for construction of smaller units, multi-household units than single-family houses. So, I mean, I hope that everybody can understand that if a three-bedroom, single-family house is built, it's more likely to have children than a two-bedroom condo.
If they can afford to buy the house, that's the marketplace. How housing prices are on the higher side, I can't afford, I can't afford to own a house in this town, and I know a lot of people who can't, you know, and I think, and young families with children who would be school-aged wouldn't either. I mean, you know, it's the marketplace, that's why the developments aren't happening. Go around, see how many houses are for sale, and how long they've been for sale.
Just for disclosure, I'm a Realtor, so yes, I do know...
Yeah, quite a few.
Less than what there had been, but more, you know, it's, we're in a balanced market. So, 2009, 2010, supply of houses on the market for attrition was 10 to 12 months. A fast market is, the supply would be two or three months. Right now in South Kingstown, you're in a five to six months, kind of a balanced, balanced market. But it does, it gets, the larger issue, and again, I hope this isn't turned on being critical of these decisions leading to this point, I'm critical of the decisions by the school committee three years ago, but historically, I can understand the need to control growth, but, you know, when Mr. Donnelly, when you bring up, you know, market, also, the town has 30 percent of its landmass is open space. So, every acre you take out of ability to develop, it's just simple supply and demand, and I think that everybody here can understand, if you have more supply, prices will be lower.
So, then you're against open space then?
You see, now this would get into like a twist situation, that's where I'm...
You just said that.
I'm specifically saying, I'm, we're having a conversation, so I'm specifically saying I'm not critical of the efforts to this point. I heard, I don't know if you remember in the January 15th meeting, people saying, "Oh, it's too bad that we have declining enrollment, wouldn't it be nice if we didn't have declining enrollment?" Do you remember that?
I don't, I did not recall that.
All right, well, check the meeting.
All right, we have Jim and Cal, so I don't know who wants to speak first. Jim?
Yeah, last figures I had, Jonathan. Since 2002, the state of Rhode Island has lost the number of secondary, elementary and secondary schoolchildren, was over 170,000, now we're 145,000. So, I don't know how you pin this tail on this donkey's backside in South Kingstown, I really don't. Matter of fact, it's quite upsetting, to be honest with you. Next, South Kingstown, back in 2001, 2002, which was one of my beefs, because that was a high point of our school population, we had 4,383 students, that's all seriously audited. Now, we're barely above 3,300. But, all those homes with those 1,300 fewer children are still available on a sale basis, fluid basis, when people come in, move out, so on and so forth, they're still available. This town could handle another thousand in those homes. We've also added single-family dwellings since 2001, 2002, if my math is correct, something like 1,000 or 1,100 more homes. We've had plenty of homes to bring children into. The reason it hasn't happened, there are not the jobs, there's not the travel, the movement out of state to other jobs for people in the state. This is market-driven, this is economy-driven, this is nobody's fault, nobody's picking on any group. And I saw, I really take exception with what you're saying here. This open space thing, 30 percent, I am appalled, because most of this is swamp. Take a look at Ministerio Road, take a look at what the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has done. I say Ministerio Road because that's the state of Rhode Island, it is a swamp, and most of that open space is there. And the rest of it are some farms that are being productive. I'm just absolutely appalled at the direction you're going with this, absolutely appalled. So, I don't think there's a conversation to be had here to, you look at the big picture here and say that South Kingstown is no different than the rest of the state. I went to Warwick High School, you ought to see the battle up there to close that school up there. They've dropped from 13,000 to 10,000 kids. Are they to be beaten up because they have affordable housing in Warwick? Where are you coming from on this issue? You're absolutely wrong and out of place. Thank you.
I guess your passion is back, Mr. O'Neill. It's a, listen, did I come up here to say the economy has nothing to do with it? Is that what I said?
Seems so.
Okay.
Basically, silently, we're critically criticizing this council, past councils, the manager, for this effort to try to reasonably control growth when it was out of control back in 2000. My gosh, Broad Rock, all of a sudden, we didn't know if it'd have enough room. Things change, economies changes, things change. And what this council has to do is not just look at tomorrow, try to look out like the six-year plan, what is the best thinking here, what's going on? Even the school committee uses outside sources, consultants, to help them with the birth rate, what's coming at us, and they've been fairly accurate. And this is what we got to look at. But I don't like this criticism of this impact fee, anything else, I've got to tell you that.
All right, and I think that...
If I can just say a final thing, I'll go sit down, if that's all right.
Please.
Okay. I don't know if I said I'm not being critical of decisions over the last 30 years, I don't know if I said it four times, five times, or six times, but I guess this is why the conversation didn't happen three years ago, because everybody reacts, they get excited, they don't stay calm.
Jonathan, if I can just come to some closure here, you know, you're focusing back on the RAC PAC Committee, the Responsible Action Committee, and if there is going to be talk of, you know, closing another school, there'll probably be another committee formed, similar to the RAC PAC, which was formed, and maybe some new information you can bring forward to that committee, but we appreciate your comments, and I'm going to end it here.
Thank you, yeah, I made my point.
I'm sorry, there was no point made whatsoever.
Good to see your passion again, Jim, I've missed it.
You know, he's out of line, he's out of water, he is out of water.
Town managers' report, Steve?
In talking with John, that March 13th date, we're going to have to move, he's out of state that week, so I'll get back to the council as far as the meeting date for the audit.
Well, do you want us to just go back, go back to one of the other dates? So, March 13th is off, do you want to try March 11th, go back to that, or?
See away that whole week.
That whole week? Do you want to try the February 27th?
Do the 27th, that seemed to be available for most everyone.
Okay, if that, we can change that to February 27th, and we'll still have it start at 6:30.
Okay. Okay.
Other than that, I think we, whenever everything in the pre-session, if there's any questions on the two reports since the last meeting, be glad to answer them.
Okay, any questions for Steve? Seeing none, let's move on to Town Solicitors' report.
Unless there are questions, Ella, I have nothing specific to report.
Any questions for Michael? Seeing none, brings us to appointments.
I move that we, well, Ella, you spoke with Betty Carter.
Right, when I read my Town Council packet, I saw the Andre Rakamaka, and, you know, I saw that we had Betty Carter there, so I made sure that I made the phone call to make sure she's still interested, and she is, was all excited.
Well, that's great, so I think we should, I move to appoint Betty Carter to the Board of Trustees of the South Kingstown Library. It's a three-year term, I guess it starts immediately.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. I believe there are no other town appointments. Which brings us to New Business Item 13, we're going to, not going to read it, but this is a resolution continued from January 13th, 2014, affirming a proclamation presented on November 9th, 2013, to Joe Tigerpatrick, the second for his effort to honor Afghanistan and Iraq fallen heroes, and if we can adopt this and at a future date, hopefully Joe will be here, maybe comments from interested citizens, and we can officially present him with this proclamation in the town chambers. So, we have a motion to approve 13, New Business Item 13.
I move we approve New Business Item 13A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We removed, we took it off the consent agenda, and if somebody would... consent agenda, and if somebody would, we have a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for order of notice of a public hearing relative to propose amendments to the town code, Chapter 10, motor vehicles and traffic relative to Succotash Road. And if we can have a motion to amend that to what we have at the table here.
I move that we amend the language in the amendment, which reads, "Succotash Road, no parking, tow zone, both sides of the roadways, from its intersection at Title Street, generally, southbound toward the Village of Jerusalem to the South Kingstown, now against the town line, a distance of nine tenths of a mile. However, parking is allowed on Succotash Road on the west side of the roadway between the north side of the Potter Pond Bridge to a point 280 feet north."
So, we have a motion to amend that? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah, could we write in their feet, or is this just not a feet sign after the 280? Could we?
It is a feet sign, but we'll make it consistent with whatever's in the rest of the ordinance. That little apostrophe means foot.
Okay, I'm just used to the old straight line, you know? No, I really, you know, sometimes you have to write in the number, and, you know, you have to do both. But, to me, it ain't feet.
In our math class is what I taught math. Two were inches and one was foot.
That's right.
All right. So, we'll make that accommodation. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 500. Anything for the good of the order before we go into closed executive session? Seeing none, can we have a motion to go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A5 to discuss matters related to the acquisition of lease of real property for public purposes, or of the disposition of publicly-held property where in advance, public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public?
So moved.
And do we need a roll call vote, Gail, Adele?
Second, right?
Yes, do we have a second, first of all?
Second.
We have a second, and can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council Vice President McAtee.
Aye.
Councilman Donnelly.
Aye.
Councilwoman Haley.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill.
Yes.
Unanimous affirmative vote to adjourn to closed executive session at 8:25.
Thank you. So, we're in executive session.